Welcome, everyone. We'll open the meeting with the Council of Plan.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to request to the board that we change the agenda just a bit to allow for my co-quit to give his presentation before we start our regular meeting. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right, and before Mike begins, I would just like to let everybody know that Mike has worked with us for the past couple of years under Main Street Grant. Mike's been the administrator from La Bella, and I have to tell you, he's been wonderful to work with. He's gone above and beyond in a lot of situations. We went through COVID, we went through materials not being available and, you know, things having to be changed and whatnot, and last-minute things going on, and he's always been right there for us. He's accommodated everything, he's worked with the state beautifully. We got little extensions and things that were probably shouldn't. But it worked out really well, so thank you very much for the work and for working with us so well.
Thank you, my privilege.
That's great.
Well, Mike, I just want to say, I also worked with Mike on the Masons Building. And it's a top match. Well, thanks.
Real pleasure working with you.
That was a wonderful project, and I would share kind of details of that. For folks over here, I'm sorry, I can't move it further back because I had to plug. If you want to swing around the seat, you're welcome to. But what's nice too is you can also just walk outside and turn. Because they're all right here, so that's another nice thing. So yeah, I'm with my co-quit. I jumped about, in about halfway through, just when things started getting interesting. I started, I think, a couple of weeks after COVID was announced it was a real thing in the United States, and we've been through the wringer. I've never asked so many requests of the state agency in my life. And, but you're not alone. This is my seventh, I just started my seventh New York Main Street Grant this past month, and so I'm doing this six times over now. This one's closed out, so. It is where we are, but I think that the whole village worked very hard through the process, including the hall and all of the property owners, to say, "We're in a bad situation, revenues are low, we don't have the funds to make this happen. Let's think outside the box and make this grant finalized in reality and have this change in our Main Street area." So, real quick, if you're not familiar with the grant, the acronym is NYMS, New York Main Street. This grant is through Homes and Community Renewal, and it provides financial resources and technical assistance to help with downtown areas. So we had to highlight in the application a certain location of the Main Street, the downtown space, that could be revitalized and have a significant impact, so it'd be small enough so there's impact, but big enough to have an impact on the whole community. There are three grant funding areas that you're allowed to use the funds for. The first is for facade renovations, as you can see, example here at 16 North Main Street. So having those facades so that as people are walking or driving down Main Street, they have something better to look at than blighted buildings. The second is looking at building upgrades, for example, very nice kitchen here, that was a blank wall before in that building. So places to make where people want to live, people want to go to these businesses because they're attractive now. So the interior, we also really milked this category, as you'll see in some areas, because businesses needed it. They needed a new chiller for their refrigerator, couldn't afford it because COVID shut them down for three months. Things of that nature, so we straight up broke the rules of this grant, that category, but it was all to help these businesses get through COVID, so it could have been a better time to have this funding available. And finally, streetscape enhancements, which the village was very resourceful in using their own labor in order to make sure to maximize this funding and get as much done on the streetscape as possible, beautifying our Main Street. That's basically it. Now here's some of the things for a streetscape. There are three main categories. One was the park kind of area with the little library, which was donated, but then installed through this streetscape process. Some materials for the parking, municipal parking area. One, to highlight handicap accessible parking on Main Street. Two, to make it clear that that is municipal parking, people can park there. And I'm really upset about this process because I used to come and always have a place to park on Main Street because no one knew they could park there. Then they finished streetscape, and now I have to park on the street because the lot's always full. But it's wonderful. It means people are coming downtown, they're using the amenities, the businesses are getting business. So that was a great outcome. And then you see all the beautiful signage and lamps, and now it's lit up down Main Street. That was all through that streetscape portion as well. All good funds utilized. Overall funding was just over $400,000 was the grant portion, not including all of the money that the property owners invested out of their own pockets as well. Those went towards materials costs in the streetscape, grant administration costs, and the individual projects that we'll look at in a moment. As far as the impact, five projects participated in the program. A number of them had to drop out because of COVID implications. We still had five successful projects complete their renovations. That resulted in six commercial units and four residential units. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe three new businesses into downtown, right, in those commercial spaces? So that is unheard of in these grants. Usually they sit for a couple of years before there's someone occupying those new commercial spaces. But we're not even closed out yet, and already three of those spaces have businesses coming in, so great success there. First project here is, I went in numeric order, 10 South Lake Avenue. Before, this was quite a blighted building, the terrible, right, that does say too much. I'm not going to bash it too hard, but it was pretty bad. The windows were definitely in need of some help. We had a lot of fun with SHIPO on this one, State Historic Preservation Organization. Said you have to retain the interior windows because they're historically significant. So we sent them a picture of a scraping rubber fake vinyl awl to show that this is not historical because plastic wasn't around, you know, in this time age. So it was, once we got past those barriers, absolutely beautiful facade improvement, where you can see the windows were accented, they weren't changed, kept retaining that historical significance, but made it stand out a lot better, cut all of the brick, and which is always a difficult task, rather than painting, just resurfacing. New windows, much brighter, open storefront, and the apartments upstairs are absolutely gorgeous. The pictures are hard to see here, but please take a few other pictures and see them, they're absolutely beautiful upstairs apartments. And one of the walls had a stamp from when the building was built, and they actually kept that. They painted around it to keep that, and as you walk into someone's bedroom, there's a stamp of when the building was built. Very cool. Please stop any questions, anybody have any? Next is 12 South Lake Avenue. Not as significant a facade change, you can see here. This was a different focus, more about activating commercial space, doing the interior works. I mean, this picture's a little bigger, you can see, but beautiful business now, the entrance is so much nicer with some new wood doors. Again, doing that right is expensive, and they spent the money, they made the investment to make sure that those doors were historically accurate, were well-built, and are going to stand the test of time, and freshened up the building and some pieces as far as the roof line and the brick repointing so that that building doesn't crumble and keeps here for a long time. So. Right here we have 16 North Lake Ave. This was a pretty substantial project for such a small space, but that building obviously sticks out on Main Street, and man, did they do a lot of work on the facade improvement and the interior is beautiful as well. If you look in the photography studio through the windows, absolutely great job with the flooring and the paint to really match and bring out those colors and just a great success story there. I don't know how much longer that building had, to be honest with you. The brick was really, talked with the contractors who did the brickwork, and they said, "Yeah, it wasn't long before that grant was going to give." And it would have, yeah, so they had to do quite a bit on that. 23 North Lake, our favorite spot to get a beverage here on Main Street. So this project was a lot of different areas. I put, it's not the most beautiful thing, but this is the cooler that powers all the refrigeration, including behind the bar at Morgan's Place. That went on them, they couldn't afford a new one, utilized, it's great to keep that business operating post-COVID, will be at post-COVID. So that was a big thing, but you can see how the lighting has just lit up that business, fixing the lighting, the lamp, lamps as well as the main sign. They redid floors, they redid the bar, the ceiling, general, all overhaul of the whole building. One commercial space, no residential there, but my nice job nonetheless. And then here's 2527 Lake Ave. This project had to be downsized a little to be one commercial space instead of two, so there's still one commercial space that needs to be renovated, that's just basically studs and gunned in right now. But the other one is beautiful. I didn't have any interior pictures because they were just wrapping it up. This is the last project we had to wrap up. You can see the facade, now they've got the sign out there, TK Flooring Business Moving In There. The apartments upstairs, they redid all the flooring, the countertops, the apartments, they were beautiful. Did a nice job there without displacing tenants. They've been working with those tenants to keep them living there, keeping people living downtown while making it nice. So it's always a difficult part when you have a residential unit and you have to kick people out to renovate it. You're kind of defeating the whole purpose, right? While people living downtown, you kick them out to renovate. So they're able to work around that, remove the awful, I'm sorry, put my mic right here. Oning here, this is just from a historical perspective, the vinyl is not appropriate. Never should have been installed there. The property owner was very open to spending the money to ripping that all out and doing it right, so.
The pictures also show a good example of the streetscape with the footer boxes.
Yes, and they did a nice job too of tying it all together as far as the streetscape ties into the colors of the buildings with those footer boxes. Really did a nice job, and then the signage is a huge piece. Having that signage that's consistent down Main Street and not hodgepodge anymore was a really nice accomplishment. So that's the overall impact we've accomplished. So we got the email today that we moved to closure, which then means we can apply for future funds. It's interesting with Homes and Community Renewal, you would think if you got a grant, they would deter you from applying next year. Not the case. They actually want you to apply again right away, and they want to give you more money. So it's a great problem to have. If you do a good job, they want to give you more. And we couldn't have had much more of a challenging situation for this grant to pull it off. By the way, I didn't mention, all property owners had to contribute at least a 25% of the project in their own funds. So as they're going through trouble with their businesses, things like that, I'm not exaggerating, I had phone calls of tears from property owners saying they can't pay payroll, and they're waiting for that reimbursement because they had to spend out all the money in advance and then wait for the money to come back. The state was bogged down because of staffing shortages. Instead of four weeks, it was taking eight to 12 weeks to get those reimbursements. So these property owners were out that significant amount of money for a long period of time. Very hard on them to keep going, so. But they all did it, they did a great job. Any questions on the program or any particular projects to answer?
So they, you said they would give us, they want to give us more money after doing this, but it's the same, same conditions?
You get kind of a checkmark on your next application. They know you, right? So they're going to get preferential treatment in the next round of this consolidated funding application. Not necessarily just in this, but other grants. I wouldn't apply for the same grant again. There's other opportunities, for example, there's a similar grant through New York Main Street called the Stabilization with the Anchor Grants. Those are focused on one particular project that needs significant improvements. Somewhere's in the realm of about $500,000. And that's for one property. But that's, that needs to, the very difficult one to apply for. Either if it's stabilization, you have to prove that the building's about to fall down essentially, and that it's important to the community. If it's an anchor grant, you have to prove that it's going to change the whole world. So I just came from Fresno, that was an anchor grant. That building now houses an op, like a, not opera, but a theater space, a kids program in the summer. It has apartment, five apartments upstairs. Just, it's a very big to get those grants. Well, it's half a million dollars, so you can do a lot with that. So there's those. There's other ones for municipalities specifically, through Homes and Community Renewal, that we want to keep an eye on, for sure.
Are there more there? Oh, there's, I'm sorry.
One question.
That would be applicable to, like the Hartford House. Because they weren't able to participate in this one. Are there other grants available that we might be able to support them with? It's all, it's all apartments and they're, you know.
It's entirely apartments?
Yeah.
I will look into Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, because those are looking at building residential units, particularly for low-income housing. I know of a project that was similar to that trend in Seneca Falls. It was next part of the DRI, but they also got money from CDBG. DRI, sorry, stands for Downtown Revitalization Initiative. It's another big, that's a $10 million grant. That one's a lot to apply for. The last application I wrote for DRI took two years. I worked with the community for two years to write that. And for the last six months, it was every week I was meeting with them to update the buildings. Forty-three pages long. Yeah. It's a, it's a process. So, but anyway, to your point, CDBG, there was one they did. Upstairs was low-income, downstairs was veteran assisted housing, a veteran house. I thought a cool concept and a really nice project. It was a historic building that they put into, paid into all apartments. Those were already apartments, it'd be a much smaller ask because you're not converting things over. I think that would be a good area to look.
Something to think about.
Right?
Because I know that they were interested in participating when we first were putting all this together, and they weren't able to because they needed the commercial piece.
Correct. New York Main Street will not allow residential-only buildings. There has to be a commercial space involved. If they put a barber shop in one of the apartments, it would count, fuck. Got to do it. I joke because I seem like those are the ones that they just talked, like barber shop and tattoo parlor, like that's the one. You can always sneak one of those in there, make it commercial, there we go. Thank you for the questions. Any others? I appreciate your time, and I always appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. Anything else left still, we'll give you help.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Get that other signature and then hopefully get that other information back to the county.
They're going to send out a nice questionnaire, don't you worry.
You're filling that out, right?
Yes, that's part of the three minutes. It's only five pages long.
Oh, okay.
I'll just sneak over here, log this out, and I'll continue with your weekend.
Thank you.
We might move that board.
What's that?
Could you move the, your
Oh, I got it right there. I don't know if the camera can see past it. Thank you.
We haven't heard from Eric, so I'm not sure what. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the bills. I think everyone has had the opportunity to take a look at the bills. Any questions, concerns? Hey, is there a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Is there something there that concerns you, John?
Just the one RTV, after we did the budgets, I was in a vote. Flipping that over at that time. That's the only one. Other than that, everything looks good.
All right, and the October 13th and October 27th meeting minutes. We can do both, or you want to do separate? Was everybody here for this?
I was not here until the 13th.
The 13th, okay, so what, we'll do them separate then. Motion to approve the October 13th meeting minutes, make a motion. Emily, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I can go to I for it, even though I wasn't here, correct?
Yeah, I think you can.
I'm an aye.
Okay, all right. And the, you guys are good? And October 27th?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those have been in my inbox for the board for a while. You don't say?
To date them?
What's that?
Put today's date on them?
No, it doesn't matter. If you can't, you want to, yeah. They're the bills that we pay on.
Oh, wow, they're a lot more important than that.
A box they put all the more meeting stuff in. There's so much other things going on.
Okay, reports. Just a couple of additions on my report. Sometimes when we do them on Monday, there are more things that come up along the way, but I wanted to congratulate the election winners on the town, Ernie Haywood, Jimmy Starwitz, and Theresa Wayland, on their positions for the next four years. And also I wanted to thank Chris Pengrazo. He's been here working seasonally in the village. He did a lot of the, he worked with Chris on the tanks, and he's worked with the guys on the groundskeeping and so on. He's been, he definitely has been an asset to the village and work has been done. So he will be leaving us soon, next Friday will be his last day, so I just wanted to officially thank him for the work that he's done. He's done a great job. As far as my report is concerned, there's a little bit of information about the Rural Revitalization Grant. I'm working on a second edition of that, and there are a couple of workshops that I need to attend. They go over all the information and how to organize things. But since it's the second go-around, most of the information is there, so we just put it together a little bit differently and add some, some other information. That application is due on the 31st. I think it's a critical project for us. The exterior of this building is really deteriorating very quickly. We've had leaks inside because of the openings in the brick, a lot of deterioration where we end up with, you know, brick pieces along the sidewalk and so on. So it's not where the whole bricks are going to come out, but it's deteriorating, they're just crumbling. It's virgin brick, and unfortunately, it's not going to last forever. So I'm going to work hard to make sure we get it this time because I think it's critical. If we don't get the grant, I think it's something that we need to think about doing on our own to stabilize that, that brickwork and preserve it.
Well, if we can get that five hundred pounds, just leave it a few more years.
Sorry, can't do a municipally-owned building. Might be a privately-owned building.
American Rescue Plan Act, we're going to talk about that a little bit later. The other information that's on here, planning board information, zoning board. We're actually going to have a zoning board meeting on the 18th, and we're going to review the new zoning law with them, so they have, they're all updated on the new zoning law. Operation Greenlight, I don't know if you've seen the buildings in the city of Batavia. The county buildings are all lit in green in support for the veterans and resources and so on for the, for the veteran community. So they are going to put green lights on the memorial up here, actually they're going to put self-defense over so that they'll be green. And then if we put it out on social media, if anyone wants to participate, it's a green light on the porch or in the window to show support for the veterans. And that will go on through this weekend. We're also working on the intermunicipal agreement with the school district. The agreement started 10 years ago where we hooked up, or the school hooked up to our wastewater treatment plant. They were able to secure funding that allowed them to pay 10 years in advance. So now it's time for us to go through this agreement again so that we can determine what their annual payments will be for the service of wastewater treatment plant. So that's in the works right now, hoping to finish that up before January, which is when the payments will start to roll over again. The traffic study that we did, I gave a report on that a few weeks back. The DOT was here, they had just come from Churchville, actually they were putting new signs in there. They took out a crosswalk sign that's been in our yard for 40 years. Students walking across the street to the school that was on Rochester Street. So finally, I don't have to flip around it to remove a one, so, good stuff. So they'll, they'll be putting the new signs in, but apparently they ordered them from a different company, so it's going to take a little bit longer. But they did all the stakes out and everything is ready for when the signs come in. Park community. I sent out information about the damage to the fence in Hickory Park, unfortunately, right after our guys had fixed everything. But lucky for us, our cameras worked really well. Everything was on video. So we had the sheriff come in and took care of all of that, filed a report, and they are investigating and taking care of that. Insurance is paying for all of it.
We got the check, right?
So we're going to replace the netting, we're going to re-call the middle part here and some of the lights that need to be done, so. It will be taken care of. Unfortunately, kids didn't have enough to do that day, apparently. The Oktoberfest, thanks for everybody that came out. It was a great success. The kids raised almost $1,000 for the three organizations that they wanted to raise money for. One was the drama club at school, one was the Historical Society, and the other was the Cemetery Association. To me, the most significant part of that, of course, is working with the kids, but also that we were able to honor Ray with his stories. So that worked out really well. A lot of people came. One of the food trucks sold out, and the other one was very happy with, with the sales that they had. So successful, and hopefully we'll be able to do it again next year. There's information about each of the departments. I know Courtney has more information there, the work that's being done or has been completed. The eight trees that were planted were from that special program, two-for-one that we were able to purchase the trees from. Trying to think of some of the other things. Eric McRae passed his CDL test, so we're excited about that. Anything on here that you have questions about? Line then finished the installation of the new poles and lines of that Liberty Pump. So that's a project completed for them. You guys didn't have a pulse of you kind of got to have that call, I think you went to that as well. And wastewater treatment plant. Chris, I didn't get the number of tanks. Do you remember what it was? Somewhere 150, 60 tanks you did this year.
Yeah, I don't know, the ZM or something.
That's right, sorry, they need to put me on the spot.
No, that's okay.
And Chris is here to talk about wastewater treatment plant in a little bit, so I'll let him take care of that. We had a meeting here with GCEDC and the owner of Hank Parker's talking about their expansion of the Apple Tree Acres. The reports have been completed for the summer rep program, and thank you, Emily, for being able to get $600 donated from the town. Yeah, that was great. For the program for next year. Went to the groundbreaking at Liberty Pumps on the 27th. You have invitations on tables for the community Christmas luncheon. A community is invited to attend on December 12th at 2 o'clock at the Sage Pavilion. The Triangle Club, the BBCA, and the Historical Society work together to put that on. We have a harvest this year, so something a little bit different. So any other questions at all? I just wanted to skim through that.
Anything else I'll be useful for, or may I head home first? Okay, just wanted to make sure, anything else, I'm happy to say. I didn't want to intrude though, too.
Thank you very much again for coming and all of your help and support for that project. It's great.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right. Have a good evening.
I'll give a time call, please be good to me. Was that a maintenance agreement?
Okay, I appreciate that. That'd be great. Yeah, you guys heard it away.
Yeah, 'cause that way we can get that information to the county and get it straightened out. There's the last minute pieces and the signatures and all of that that I don't, yeah. Your turn.
Um, so I managed not to put my report in packets. Well, I, I did email it out to the local video on Reddit, uh, prior. Um, but, uh, just an addition, uh, Mayor Taco Eric passed me the CDL. So, uh, I submitted his, uh, information to become a member of the union. Uh, and then we have to, uh, apply to the county to get, uh, classification change. And then once those two happen, we'll officially become an MEO and then like reunion. We'll start doing trades and, which is always in the budget. Um, also, um, it's getting close to budget time. So we have to start thinking about all those things. Over sidewalks, equipment, and how you close all the major links. So I'm just kinda figuring with that, you know, to have a start scheduling. What meetings here shortly, uh, first of the year, if I can.
Is the health insurance locked in for so long though?
Yeah, yeah, it goes very long with the, the union contract, which, which I love about the teachers' contract is they lock in a rate of exactly what we're getting for three full years. So, you know, the budget for that is very, I was talking to, um, somebody last week. Um, they're talking about how much, I, I think we'll get the, that was a thing, and then we, they're talking about how much they pay for insurance. And they, um, we have eight to ten percent increases in healthcare insurance up here. Ours, through the team's, only this year, so.
Yeah, and then that's, that's a lot and, you know, that, uh, so we're at two or three percent increases every year.
With the team's, so we absolutely, we're like that.
And you're right, knowing about it at a time is really helpful. That's good. Yeah, I'll watch it somewhere. Okay, thanks for you. Um, the report from CEO CEO is in your pocket. Um, we get a chance to talk to you this weekend, we could send you the question. This report is there, all the descriptions are there for you to take a look at. Chris, I'm, well, I have to say your call this evening.
Eric's not coming, I sent him a text. He said, uh, he said exactly, negative, still down in Fredonia, makes up on schedule.
Oh, okay. All right, well, Chris and Eric, we're, we're coming tonight to kind of review where we're at with, um, the monies that we have in place, uh, for the project at the wastewater treatment plant and some of the things that are going on there. Do you wanna just give a little overview about where you're at and what kinds of things we're looking at? Like the computer system and how the membranes are working and about that, what about?
Yeah, we're, Eric is working on getting money, uh, some sort of a grant or something for that. One of the things that we need to do is the, the computer that we have, we don't have a backup. So what's running that plant is original to the plant eleven years ago. Um, and I cannot overstate enough that if that computer fails, if it goes down, it doesn't matter what else we do at that plant, nothing's happening. At that point, I just start filing non-compliance forms to the DEC and then they decide what happens to us. Um, and, and it's just gonna flow out the plant. There's really nothing else you can do. Um, so it's really important that we, that we get not only the main one in the MBR replaced and the touchscreen, all of that's gonna be replaced, uh, but also having the backup in the office so that we have that redundancy in place. And it sounds like, from what Corp was telling me, it sounds like, uh, we may be able to get started on that. He can speak to that better than I could. Um, so I, I, again, I just can't stress that enough. Really, it doesn't matter what else you do at the plant, if we don't tend to that.
We don't have a plant.
It's, it's, we're just playing roulette at this point. Um, and then we have the mechanical screen that, uh, I will take partial responsibility for this. Uh, Bruce and I allowed Gary to talk us into getting rid of the, the screen. Uh, for some reason that really bothered Gary in the worst way. We got rid of that. It was a global awesome mistake. Bruce and I should have put our foot down on that. We just should have and, and told Gary he had no business trying to make those changes to the plant. Um, and with the new membranes that we have in place, we've, we've got screens that we slide into place in the influence structure. The problem with that is you're constantly having to clean them and you can't clean them as frequently as they need to be. And the last rains that we had, even though I cleaned it that morning when we had that two inches of rain, it just blew the screen right out anyway. You're supposed to have one point five to one point seven feet per second flow through there. Those screens prevent that from happening. So you have a lot of organic material which our plant runs really lean on. We, because of our system, um, we really need all that organic material for, for the bugs. Um, but a lot of that settles out in front of those screens. So if we get the mechanical screen in place, it takes care of all of that and it protects our new membranes, which are, uh, doing a fantastic job. So the last two heavy rains that we had, where we had over two inches of rain appease. We have a lot of infiltration. I know that infiltration study that was done says we don't. That's nonsense. We do have a lot of infiltration. The question is, is where is it coming from? I don't know. Uh, Eric and I have a difference in opinion on that. I'd let him speak to that if he was here. Anyway, we processed, the first time we processed, the plant is supposed to take two hundred and eight thousand gallons, uh, at high flow. And that first event that we had, I think it was two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and fourteen thousand. So it did over what it was supposed to. The, it called me, the plant never went offline, but it did call me for high level. So I had to go down and divert to the ditch for a while in order for the membranes to catch up. But the membranes, prior to that with the old membranes, that, that would have kicked off. The membranes themselves would have gone offline and, and we would have been in serious trouble. And it would have gone offline well before we hit that mark. Uh, this last time, we, it, it called me again. Uh, we didn't get quite as much flow through the plant, but only by eight thousand gallons maybe. So, uh, it called me again, same thing, high level. I had to divert for a few minutes, uh, and then I, I closed down the, the gate, the slide gate that allows flow into the plant. I just closed that down by a turn and that was enough to regulate it going into the plant. And the plant never went offline, never. So those membranes were well worth the expense. But we really need a proper screen in place there to protect those membranes. So that's part of all of what Eric is trying to factor in. And then something that I want to talk about, again, there seems to be some hesitancy and I'm not sure why. We had a guy from Canada come down, his name is Richard Nye. He stopped in pre-COVID, took a look at the plant and he, was that pre-COVID? It was right after we put the new membranes in, so whenever that was. And he came down and assessed the plant. I explained to him issues that we have late January, early February during that time. And I told him that I suspected that all signs pointed to the fact that the, the temperature, when the temperature drops, the membranes don't work sufficiently. And that's, that seems to be a, a big part of our problem. And he said that he agreed with that a hundred percent and said that we would be able to, it wouldn't be much at all. They make these heaters that you can put into the pre-air tank and the ring is still in there from the old clarifier. He said we could just hang them from there and we could either hardwire them or just plug them into the wall. It didn't matter. And that we wouldn't have to run them except maybe during those times when, you know, at the end of January and maybe through February. And all you're trying to do is bring it up by one or two degrees. And he said that that would help us, uh, in, in a huge way. There seems to be some resistance on that and I'm not sure why. Maybe because the idea is that the plant is supposed to work at the temperatures that it, that we get there, but it doesn't. So I, I don't think we should, we should work off of what should happen. I think we should be working from the position of what is happening. And, uh, he seemed to think that those were not too expensive. I can get ahold of him and see what he would recommend and, uh, and find out what the, what that cost would be. And then of course with virgin electric, I know, uh, New York is sticking it to us in terms of things that they're throwing at us, but it's still cheaper than, the electric would be cheaper than what I'm paying at my house. Um, and again, we would run that for the heaters a month, month and a half maybe. You know, we'd have to play it by year, can't say definitively, but I think it's well worth the investment. Now, there was issues regarding the school or concerns regarding the school. It, it took forever for them to get us their MSDS sheets so we knew what was coming into the plant. And I'm not sure if that was intentional or if it was just always placed on the back, uh, back burner. I, I don't know. What I do know is last year when school was not really in session, I didn't have issues with the plant. I mean, it, it spiked, but I didn't have the, the sorts of, I didn't have the foaming issues that I've had in the past. And the foaming issues in the past have been horrific. So much so that, um, our contact at the DEC, Luke and I, we, we had to have a two hour, uh, battle before he understood that it wasn't incompetence on my part, but rather something either coming into the system or, uh, a combination of things which I think are, are temperature related as well as whatever was coming to the plant. Now, does that mean for certain that it was the school? No, I guess it doesn't mean certain, but it always, it always correlated with when the school shut down for their February break, which I thought was rather coincidental. And it did not happen this year. Could it be that the, that the new membranes made all the difference? It could be. But, uh, the school has gotten us that information. Eric is supposed to be looking it over to see what it, what impact that would have on our, and, and unfortunately, he's not here to talk about that. Um, is there anything else?
Yeah, um, so what we're doing, you know, we're, we have that chunk of money at this point that, um, the EFC, right, the money's from there. And we've been talking about this computer system and we've been talking about the screen. Um, and those kinds of things are covered. I think there were a couple other little things that were covered by that. So we want to move forward with that because it seems like that we need to move, especially with the computers. So it's been, you know, a lot of talking back and forth, but, but it's time now that we move and make sure that we get these things taken care of because Chris is absolutely right. Without the computers and that's, you know, it's a real issue at this point. If those computers go down, we have nothing.
There's no way to manually front the plant, there just isn't.
So it's something that we really need to say, okay, let's go ahead with that. Same thing with the screen, that screen has to be taken care of, especially now that it's been broken. Um, the heaters, and I was, I'll talk a little bit more about this later, but the heaters, um, we can purchase as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, and again, I've been working on that and talking to Chris, talking with Courtney and, and all the other, uh, the, um, other folks about the different aspects of how to use the monies um, for that particular fund. And we can use some of those funds for wastewater. And if the heaters are something that seem to be critical at this point, um, we could move some of that monies in that direction to purchase those heaters. And Chris is gonna take a look and see what the cost of that would be. We, we don't know at this point, um, to see what we can do with that. Um, as far as the infiltration, like you said, it was way up with those two storms that we had. Um, but the plant managed it, which was great. I mean, that's something that we need to kind of pull our hair out about. And by doing the stormwater mapping and that project is finished, um, part again of the American Rescue Plan Act is that we can use money for stormwater. And to take a look now, we know what the, the mapping is, but it's all mapped out, the elevations and the locations and so on for that, um, determining flow. And then we need to take a look and see where are the issues with our stormwater system? Where, where is it not working? Where is leaking? Where's, where's water coming in? We don't know. So that's part of the monies that we can use or the funds that we can use from this rescue plan, um, to take care of our stormwater issue and hopefully reflect it again in not getting that infiltration over the wastewater treatment plant. So all those things are tying in together. And at this point, it's, it's things that we need to make the decision about moving forward with. You know, we've been sitting on it, trying to work through what the best way to use the funds is. Um, the EFC conversations that it then had, you know, how are we gonna best use this money? And that's the direction that we're thinking, along with Eric and the other folks that we've been working with, would be the way to go. You know, to focus on making sure that that wastewater treatment plant is secure in its movement. Um, we know that Chris comes in periodically and there's this and that. It happened all the time and he's great at problem solving, thank goodness. Um, so we keep that thing moving, but these are critical things that we need to take care of. You know, the computer, um, the screen, the, um, heaters at this point, checking on that infiltration. So if we can start moving and getting all this going, we're at the point now where we can make that happen.
Did you, did you, last year, you said that you didn't have the problems when the school was in session at the foaming? Was the temperature part of that too, or the temperature was different? You still had problems?
We didn't, uh, dip quite as low for as long a period of time. So that's what I'm saying. I can't say that correlation equates causation, but it, it, it's curious to me.
So when the, you know, the floors were stripped and all the cleaning was done during February break, that seemed to be the time where between the cold weather and whatever else was being sent down here to the plant, um, can't determine which was which. Was it both, you know? Was it more one than the other? We don't know. But it, school being closed last year, it didn't happen. So it does impact it somehow. And they, they've sent us the, it's a notebook, um, full of MSDS sheets. Um, and I, it's here. It hasn't gone any further than here at this point.
Oh, it hasn't? Eric doesn't have it?
No. So whether or not, you know, that's the case, I know they were changing over. They were changing some of the cleaning supplies. They were looking at, you know, more biological things that they could use rather than the chemical based stuff that they had. So they were trying to use more organic materials, biological, more organic materials. And hopefully they did, hopefully they switched over. Don't know for sure.
What's one of the average flows during the week?
Uh, right now, because of all the rainfall, it's been roughly a hundred thousand. In the summer, it'll drop down to sixty, fifty to sixty thousand. And then in the winter, it's, it averages around a hundred and fourteen.
How much does a school open to the system a day?
I don't know, I've never really tracked that.
They're responsible for thirty-four, thirty-four units?
That's what it's on, yeah. I don't, I don't think there's any, um, heater or anything anywhere.
I'm sure, you know, I can go back, 'cause I have to, I have to track those numbers every day.
Yeah.
And I could see when school got into session and just see what the uptick was.
So these, these heaters been used in any other similar?
Yeah, uh, I, I think I mentioned that, uh, Richard's from, from Canada. And, uh, he says they use them up there all the time because they run in, specifically run into this problem. And he says they use them up there all the time because they run in, specifically run into this problem obviously. And so, yeah, they're tested. He, he is just one of those guys who, he knows membranes inside and out, you know, out of retire, not knowing anywhere near what this guy knows about membranes. And so he came down, he didn't charge us anything for it. And, and, you know, he spent probably three hours with me going over issues at the plant. And he seemed to think that that was like a very easy fix. And he also, he, he was rather dumbstruck when he found out that we didn't have a backup for our computer system down there. He was like, you need to tend to that. I'm like, yeah. I did run conduit underground between the two buildings over the summer. And I'll finish running conduit in preparation for it. I'll run the CAT six wire and get all that in place so that when we're ready to move on this, that's not holding us up and we're not paying anybody else to do that work.
So what we need to?
Well, we need to agree that that's the direction we need to move. The money is there, it's just we need to determine how it's going to be spent. And that's, that's the EFC money. So, you know, the-
What's EFC? EFC, what does that stand for?
Environmental Facilities Corporation?
So, um, yeah, I mean, if you're okay with taking that money now and purchasing the computers, I think that's number one. Making sure that that mechanical screen is taken care of. And the heaters, exactly, that wasn't part of that list. Heaters would have to be the American Rescue Plan money.
So the EFC is a grant? That, that's the grant that we were talking about, right?
The EFC money was part of the BAME. And they've been, well, I think have been taken care of already with the lift stations as they've had problems. And so, since we had, we're both in the room for COVID and everything kind of stock, some things can happen. So the budget has changed quite a bit. So Eric was, you know, should we have some more money freed up from all those funds? So that's why we're able to add the screen and whatnot. So I, I'm not sure with, if we talk to, when we get the, 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 um, question for the heaters, we might, it might be, you know, still fixed.
Be able to squeeze it in there?
Because he kind of, when we talked to Eric after this school meeting, he kind of indicated there might be a little more room still. So we might be able to-
Because we took some things off the list, put some things on, so the money kind of changed.
And then is that a hundred percent covered? Like what is that?
Well, the EFC funds is a loan.
Okay, it's a loan.
And, and there is some of that, it, it, there's, we also got a grant as part of it. And then, well, that is a towards the, the, the pension. We don't want to put heaters on there, that's a loan. We can give through our, we can do that.
Yeah, so can we put more stuff on the American Rescue Plan thing?
We can, I have a few things that I want to talk to you about. It's like, it's, that money, you know, has been categorized as a gift. And we want to use it as efficiently as we can and structure it as far as we can to get the most out of it for, for the community. So that's kind of what I've been looking at. It's taken a little bit longer, but we, we have time. Just want to, you know, pull some of those costs together. I don't have all the estimates and all the, and all the things that we're looking at, but it's getting closer. So I'll, I'll go over that too. So what we can do then is we'll, we'll talk to Eric again, make sure we have the right numbers and get back to everybody on what those exact numbers are. And we'll find out about the heaters. I know Chris is working on that now and see what, what kind of monies we have. And then we'll get it out to everybody so we can see what it is. But if you're okay and we can start getting those computers and everyone order them like Friday, not tomorrow, are you okay with that?
And you can also back up the hard drives. I, I did that with the SCADA system that controls the substation at Hurdville. And sure enough, the computer failed and our IT folks came around and built a new, put it all on a new computer and went and fired it up and all the customized software and everything would work.
Worked, okay.
The way it was supposed to. So that might be something you want to, to look into as well. So we now have a copy, a safe, fire safe.
That would be a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
Yep, so I mean, if you had a vandalism or an electric surge down there, both your computers fried, you've got it on right third location. And I can certainly put you on top of the folks that did that for us. It's minimal, but I think worth eight hundred bucks.
It's worth four to five. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Great. Okay. Any other questions for Chris? Thank you.
You're welcome.
For pointing.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it, you too.
Anyone that can really figure out or do a special conflict, if he was down for doing any, must have.
Totally, yeah. Yeah, Chris has been working a lot on those kinds of things and we've been having a lot of discussions about it. And I think, I think we're headed in the right direction. You know, the plant, it runs well, when it runs well. But there are so many things, there's so many moving parts that, you know, it just kind of, this little thing happens and that little thing happens. And, and he's so good about, okay, let's work it through, let's work it through. And, and he works hard at it, he really does, so. We'll get it, we'll get those computers and then we'll get the information out to everybody so you have whatever it is. Okay, thank you. All right, um, American Rescue Plan Act. Okay, so in looking at it, we have a little less than a hundred twelve thousand dollars that has come in to us. Half of it's already here. And I've attended several webinars and discussions because all the details are not in place. There are a lot of moving parts for that as well and things change. But in meeting with the folks at the county and having a discussion with them, taking a look at the projects that are going on around Genesee County and how they're using their money, I think we're kind of in the right direction here for, for using those funds most effectively. The stormwater, we had talked about doing the mapping of the stormwater. And that has been completed, we don't have the map yet, but that's been completed. And instead of taking that money from our budget, we are able to use twenty-five hundred dollars out of the American Rescue Plan Act. So we'll, we'll take the money from there so that doesn't impact our budget. The work that will need to be done, we don't know how much yet, will need to be done, but we need to repair and restore any of the infrastructure in that stormwater system to be sure that it's functioning properly. That certainly is a big push across the county, especially with all the new water lines coming through. They're, they're kind of again focusing on infrastructure, making sure everything is in place. So I thought if we are going to do the mapping anyway and that's something that we need to take care of as far as our infrastructure is concerned, we have the opportunity, we have the money to do that. So I'd like to see some of the monies go toward taking care of that. Mitigation, COVID mitigation is another portion along with stormwater. And the town is taking all of their funds and they're putting it into parks. That's how they're going to spend their money, which is COVID mitigation. So what they're looking at is ways for people to be outside, ways for people to exercise and, and, and lead a healthier lifestyle by some of the things that we're able to do with some of this money. We have been looking for years for money to upgrade or rebuild the bathrooms in Hickory Park. All the, the work has been done up there. A lot of people use that park, they use it for the pavilions, they use it for walking, they use it for all kinds of activities and things. And we're once again trying to get more activity in the park. We have a lot of problems with the bathrooms. There's a lot of damage that's done all the time, a lot of destruction that's done all the time. The stuff that, that kids think of to do in those bathrooms is creative, but not the kind of creativity who I want to take a look at. So I'm thinking, um, taking some of the money and building a restroom area. It only needs, according to the studies, we only need one at each. And instead of having the pipes and everything right in the bathroom areas so that they can be, I don't know, broken, changed, whatever they do with them, stuff shoved in them, whatever. We make a center utility area so that the pipes and things from the sink and everything are in the center. And they can be worked on, but they're not accessible to anybody going to the bathrooms. Same thing with, with the, you know, the toilet and so on, making sure that they are, and they have them. Apparently, I haven't seen them yet, but you can't shove things down in them. You can't destroy these new toilets that they are. We have to have changing tables, that's required now for the new code. So changing people have to be in there. To me, that's just something to break, right? But they're required, so that's something we have to put in there. The other thing, I was talking to Eric and Brian about it. He's done a lot of construction work and so on, so he has some background about this. And I was trying to think of locks, you know, that we could do remotely or run timers or whatever. And he is talking about these Wi-Fi deadbolts that you can use that would solve the problem. We used to pay somebody to lock the, the bathrooms and whatnot. And I hate to have the guys come back for an hour or whatever it is to, to lock the bathrooms, but this would work, so they would be able to remotely lock the bathrooms.
Anybody in? You won't accidentally lock anybody in?
I hope not, no. Be able to open from the inside. He's on my ground, mom, how am I gonna get out of here? So those are the kinds of things we're talking about. The design of the restroom would be similar to the pavilions. So it all kind of blends in. And if, you know, instead of a sinner block, you know, we'll work on what kinds of materials. And the, the construction would all be done in-house, so it would be less expensive hiring out to do that. The, in talking to Eric and his architect, and I sent that information out to everybody. It was his proposal and it was thirty-two fifty would be for the drawings and all of that kind of thing that need to be done to prepare for a building like that. And with these monies, you have to show all of that. You can't just, you know, design it on a piece of paper. You have to have all of that information in place and sign drawings and whatnot. So again, that thirty-two fifty would come out of the, the monies that we have. And then lastly, the third, the third component would be wastewater. And again, you don't have to do anything on each of those. You could just pick one category, whatever, to spend this money. But I was trying to find a way that we could use the money in all of those areas, so use it most efficiently. Wastewater, you know, we could help out over there with the heaters if that's not going to be possible with the monies that we have available to us. So we could look at that and, and again, Chris is looking for prices on those. The other thing we talked about quite a bit was the linemen always have things on the shelf. You know, if something breaks or something is needed, you know, they can, they have this stock, stockpile inventory that they have access to. So I asked Chris to put a list together of things that would benefit the wastewater treatment plant by having as inventory. You know, what, maybe it's a motor, maybe it's a fan, maybe it's, I don't know, whatever it happens to be. So he has put a list together. We went over it this afternoon and then took a look at it again. He's going, ah, I don't really need that, or you know, so, so it's not quite finished yet. But once it is, then we'll get cost for all of these things and then I can put it all together for you. But that's the direction that I was trying to, to move in, to take that money, you know, and say, look, we can use it for stormwater, we can use it for COVID mitigation, we can use it for wastewater. Let's see if there's a way that we can do things that we don't have the money for in our budget and use that to kind of benefit the community as a whole. You know, whether it's our infrastructure, whether it's something of the part, whether, you know, whatever it happens to be. And we don't have to put that in our immediate budget and look at ways to, to pay for it that way. So once I get all the money, and once I get all the information, you know, I'll put it together. But the twenty-five hundred, because we all talked about that, spending that twenty-five hundred. So we did that and we'll take it from this fund. The thing that I'd like you to decide about is whether you're okay with spending the three thousand. It may not be thirty-two fifty, it may be less than that, that's just his estimate. To go ahead and have them put drawings together and put a proposal together as far as, not a proposal, but the drawings together as far as what the restroom building would look like. And then the guys will take it from there and do the construction work.
I have three questions. What, are the bathrooms open at night now or are they locked when the guys go home? Do they lock the bathroom?
They don't always lock them at night. They're locked now, they're, they're closed. Yeah, they don't always lock at night.
So probably things have been happening at night. It's not like things are happening during the day.
Sometimes they happen in the day.
A lot of times it happens in our day because the little kids are out around, or after school or not.
Then you open them, you know, for parties or if you have something up there. And one day, apparently they had, I don't know, they were making ice cream sundaes or whatever it was. And inside of the bathroom was completely coated with chocolate. Chocolate all over the place. And then the bottle is shoved down the toilet.
Like, I don't know, I just think sometimes, I'm like, yeah, you want people to be able to use the bathrooms, but at the same time, like, I mean, they destroyed the fence in the middle of the day, so.
You know.
I just, I wonder if, if we do spend this money, do we need to also reevaluate the bathroom policy of like, when it's open?
Certainly.
I, I don't know, I, I talked with you about like at, at Byron? It is only open when there is an event or when like people are there. Like, I open it for rec when I go and I lock it up. And, I mean, it's, they have a porta potty. So like, if you want to use the bathroom, you go to the porta potty, which is kind of silly because you have a bathroom. But at the same time, I don't, I don't know, I just like.
No, I agree with you.
I don't know. So I guess with that, it kind of makes me think like, is that something? I know those bathrooms up there are awful. So it's like, yeah, you want a new bathroom, but it, do we want a bathroom that's going to get destroyed? Do we want to do something different? I don't know. Those are thoughts that really didn't help with anything.
No, I think you're right. I think, you know, if we continue to do what we're doing, we're always going, we're going to get the same result. And, and, and that was a minor kind of thing. I mean, the, the things that they do are horrible. And we can put a policy and we can do that. You know, that's certainly up to, to the board to, to make that decision.
And having remote locks would make it easier to say like, okay, these people have rented out the pavil- the pavilion or whatever you call it.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. So like, it will be open from this timeframe and then like it's being closed. Or there's a baseball game there tonight, so for these two hours it's open and then it's like locked off, whatever. But, so I don't know, that was a thought.
Does that make sense?
About that, I don't know. And then, so if the other thing for the wastewater treatment plant is a loan, what is that going to do to the wastewater budget? And what impact is that going to have on there? Whereas would it be wiser to use the money that we have for that? Or is it not going to be detrimental to the budget that's already tight?
So they're projecting right now that it's going to be about twenty-five to twenty thousand dollars additional per year for the debt.
However, we have about that amount coming in from the school district. So their fee for the year would cover that.
Their, their twenty-three thousand, is that fair?
They haven't, they, they paid a lump sum in the beginning. So now that we're redoing the, the agreement, they will now pay an annual fee for the thirty-four, thirty-seven units, I can't remember what it was. And it is somewhere in the twenty-eight thousand dollar range, probably a little more than that. Um, and it is somewhere in the twenty-eight thousand dollar range, probably more than that.
Maybe it was thirty-two, I, I read through the draft today. And I was thinking that's twenty-three thousand, but maybe thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, there, there are some changes that are gonna be made there too.
They're gonna sell it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So that was silly, you have an idea of what, what the numbers are gonna look like. I don't know exactly.
So it will kind of even that out?
Okay. And then we'll have that computer system and we'll have, you know, things that need to go in there.
So that, how many years is that ban out for? So the money that we have from the American Rescue Plan, which, don't get started on that name. Anyway.
It's a gift.
Sure.
Part of me says, let's just split that up and give it back to the people who paid for it to begin with. Anyway, I hate grants, I think they're dumb, let me keep my own money and I'll give it to who I want to. But anyway, I said I was gonna start. Um, that is gonna be way more for that stuff for the wastewater treatment plant than what we would have in our gift money. Then, right?
Yeah, the computer system by itself will be sixty thousand.
Okay, okay, so then it, it doesn't make sense to.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right.
And thank you for bringing this up, because we're, you know, working on this and talking about it, and it's good to hear other thoughts about it.
We would get all the numbers together and all the. Conclusion, which one do you want to go with?
Yeah, you gotta get the numbers.
When, when will we know how much the repair of the stormwater infrastructure, an infrastructure will cost?
As soon as we get, as soon as we get the, the other part of this going.
Okay.
I mean, they'll, they'll give us an estimate, but we won't know exactly what it's gonna be until we know what, what needs to be repaired.
And how are they gonna know what needs, are they gonna send cameras down the lines, and what are they gonna do?
They have, they have a couple of options that they're talking about, and they have not decided on one yet. Um, and the reason for that is they're, they're putting the map together. And by putting the map together, they're gonna be able to find exactly where the direction of the flow is, because they've got elevations that are part of that map now. And then they're gonna need to then figure out which would be the best way to work with that. So whether it will be the dyes going through, and I don't think, I think there was something else that they use now, um, besides the dyes, or, or the camera.
I think that's a lot of internal rot from these conduits, a lot of them way back in the sixties.
And that's why it's so critical to get this done. We have to do it. We have to get it done.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of idea what that could be, but they need to cast iron, they could be, you know, ride it all up from, you know, whatever.
So with that, should we hold off on getting drawings, because what if that is really significant? And that's something that's more important. Like, does that money have to, like, we don't have a time limit on it, right?
We do.
Oh, we do have a time limit, okay. What is our time limit?
We have two years to finish up a portion of it. And then I think all the paperwork and everything has to be done a year after that or two years after that.
Okay, okay, so we have time, you know, like, kind of to play, so if we can find out, like, this is how significant that project is before we commit to funding any of it, we can, you know.
Timeline and when we find out, how significant this patch is gonna be. And we're only, I guess, we're only doing.
That's what we're working on, that's what we're working on. Um, because there are so many pieces.
Yeah.
It's taken a while and, and, you know, for this, this piece on the, on the bathrooms, we can't really do anything until we know, you know, until we, we get the drawings and whatnot, to see what the actual cost of that will be. Um, so we don't have to do it all at once, we can do it one piece at a time. I think the stormwater is critical at this point, and, um, the wastewater, to get the heaters.
I agree.
So, so we start there and make sure that we have the funding that we need for the stormwater and wastewater. And the, the bathrooms will be lovely, but, you know, that can be pushed down a little bit.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. And then it gives us time to think about, too, like, a policy of what we want to have of our.
Right. Well, that's what's nice about this money. Yeah. What's nice about this money right now is that, that we have time to look at all these things. And that's why I'm trying to kind of investigate all of those pieces, to see what, what it is, um, the best benefit for the community, see what's, what's the best thing to do. So we need all of those things.
Right.
It's just a matter of, you know, how can we put it all together and, and use the, the money most wisely, I guess. So using that other monies that we have and this money, and see how we can do it most efficiently. So it's a lot to, it's a lot to think about. And we can kind of actually run for, for, I don't know. Yeah. They all should be done, you know? It's just what direction do, can we, should we move in, so, we'll keep working on it. I just wanted to let you know what, what's been happening with all of that. Um, but we definitely have to push that, the computers and get that taken care of.
Do we need to make motions for any of those things, or is that just like happening?
I think.
Well, we're not really gonna break them, right?
Well, I think we have to move on the computers, and we have to do that.
Yeah, it's important.
Yeah, um, and, um, the, the, the screen we have to do, we know that. Um, and we'll have to check on the heaters once he gets the price on the heaters, and then see what the monies are, and see what else Eric had in there, because there were a couple of other things he, that he was gonna talk about. Um, so it's hard to, you know, get his perspective when, when he's got the whole thing in his mind to talk about.
Did we approve? Everything for the project?
We did before.
Originally?
Yeah.
But a bunch of heads changed.
Mm-hmm. And some of the pieces have changed too, so.
I'd better have a report.
Can we, um, make a vote to purchase the computers? And that's number one, and get that started, and then put the other stuff together. So if somebody wants to make a motion for the expenditure of the computers, who always wanted to, you know, we can move that forward.
I'll make a motion.
Ah.
Go ahead.
One, two.
Rock, paper, scissors, no way.
Emily made the motion.
All right. All right, are those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, and we'll move that forward. All right, um, thank you for that, and thank you for the discussion.
Do you wanna go back to your floor, um, trusty concerns?
Yeah, we got, we lost that, didn't we? Privilege of the floor and trusty concerns.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need any help putting the welcome packet together?
Um, any input would be appreciated. I have a, I have some samples and I have things that I, I've stored through, but sure, absolutely.
So I should come down or talk to you, like, a time plan?
Yeah, yeah, no, that'd be great.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we're putting packets together for new people that come into the village, because we don't have a welcome wagon anymore, and Triangle doesn't do it anymore, so. Trying to put some pertinent information together for folks when they move in. Thank you. Anything? All good? Okay. Trusty concerns. Okay, Joe, anything? Alan?
No.
It's up to you, Pop.
Streetlight out across the street here. I'll spend about a week, at least a week down.
Okay.
And also I'd like to thank Chris, and unfortunately not here, I, I did have a sewer issue in, in Little Curdville, and Chris was helpful with the scanner, uh, pinpointing that for us, so I, I'm looking forward to it. And Chris for, uh, and the village as well.
And you walked in the way that, um. We have, um, an email from a resident talking about, um, the streetscape and the village as a whole, and, and the things that have been done, and, and flowers over the summer and so on. And it was a wonderful, wonderful email, so I wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that as well. People call in, they say things, and when they write it down, it's like, yeah, very good, it's nice. All right. Most exciting piece, marijuana dispensaries. Um, I sent out a bunch of information for you. Um, I did check on a couple of folks who said they might be able to come out, and they're, I'm gonna bog down, I guess, I'm not able to at this point. But I think we have enough information to see what, what, uh, we're looking at. Um, the town has voted to take no action, um, allowing retail sales in the town as far as marijuana is concerned. Um, the, you know, the benefits at this point, we are trying to figure out how much of a benefit it actually is. It's, you know, for sales of marijuana, uh, in a retail establishment in the village, um, there are a lot of components to that, there's a lot of security that's involved. Um, we would probably need more parking if it's something that actually ends up, um, coming here. I was listening to a discussion about, um, the different communities and how things are going across the state. And it said, like, seventy-five percent of the municipalities across New York State have opted out. They don't wanna have anything to do with marijuana dispensaries in their towns or villages or anywhere. Um, the, the income that it would bring in is, if there was one in the village, we have to share it with the town. And we also have to share with the county, whatever the sales tax happens to be. Um, and it's four percent, so it's four percent from the sale. Twenty-five percent stays with the county, and the remaining seventy-five percent would be distributed between the town and the village. So, you know, if it's a hundred dollars and it's a, we end up with four dollars as far as sales tax is concerned. You know, it's like, a dollar moves to the county and a half goes to the village and the town. And then the town is completely responsible for security and, you know, all of that too.
I think we got problems in the bathrooms and the.
I hear ya, I hear ya. You know, I, thinking about it, um, you know, if we had our own police force or something like that, where you would be assured that you would have protections or whatever, um, for things like that. From what I understand, it's, um, it's a security issue, it's, it's, um, there are a lot of issues attached to it.
Yes.
And the, the payback just doesn't seem to equate with.
Well, especially since it sounds like you can opt in anytime.
You can opt in anytime.
So suddenly we find out it's gonna make us know. You can opt out, but it's true.
Right.
Right.
I think it makes sense to say, and then change our mind if we're like, oh, wow, this is the best thing since place.
But one thing I think we do need to do is, um, make sure it's not allowed in our parks. Either opting in or, or not opting in, either way, I think we have to. And there, and, and the downtown sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
You have to.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I think that could be very concerning. Well, I don't know, I'm not sure if we can do that, we can only do village park, yeah, I think.
Well, we don't allow smoking on, um, village sidewalks, believe it or not, um, or in the parks now.
Okay.
Um, it, it, you know, the problem we have all the time is enforcement. I mean, we don't have, you know, the kind of enforcement it would take to make sure that.
I think, I think I have to look again, but I thought in there there was a possibility of fines or something, at least. Because smoking, I think smoking, tobacco, we don't have that.
No.
I think I have to look again to be sure, I think that's a. I don't think that means you have to opt in, I think you should be able to do that, whether you must or not.
Yeah, well, that would be, you know, that would be separate from, from, uh, retail. But we have to, you know, we have to find a way to enforce it, and that's, you know, that's, that's our issue, that's always our issue.
Well, it can always be, we have it, and then if it's a problem, then you can call the sheriff.
What, yeah, I think we have to have it anyway, whether we can, we can enforce it or not.
If you have nothing, you call the sheriff, there's nothing they can do, so. You're not gonna stop.
There's, there's sometimes.
But you might stop if, if, you know, if a big problem happens, if you have.
And, and I think about it, it was actually just like a Hickory Park, but I'm into Special Sage Pavilion, like that.
And it, it did say in the thing that anywhere where you have no smoking now, that also carries over.
Yes, yes.
It's, that's the same.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously people smoke on their sidewalks, especially down by, by Morgans, and, and, you know, how do you stop that? Uh, you probably, I don't know, can you stop people smoking marijuana there as well? I, I don't know. I don't know, but like you said, if you call somebody in, and it, it becomes a problem and you call somebody, that would make a difference.
I think we were to opt in, you wouldn't even have one right over here in the village. Renting from the village.
Renting from the village.
That's where we take the money.
We get rent.
I don't think you could, I think if you opt, I don't think you can tell them no if you opt in.
Right, you can't.
Yeah.
Can't. And, so we have to make a decision by December thirty-first.
So is that something that the village would have to vote on?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the law, right? So we have to be in the public hearing now.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Well, unfortunately, there's a lot of prejudice against it, which there is, and rightfully so. So it's a, it's a pretty heavy decision there. Uh, but I don't know, I don't think you're gonna have much trouble in maybe rejecting it. Because, uh, any historical reference to it is, is not good. Doesn't have good history. You know, that's, it's, it's just bad. It's a stepping stone to other drugs.
Oh, this year, this year you allow marijuana. So two years down the road, it'll be cramped.
Yeah, there'd be that tendency to go further. These guys are nuts, they get on it, you know? There's no logic to it.
There's also the significance of the precedent was set, it's like, what kind of example are you showing the children? If you're trying to raise your children to not be involved with drugs, like, the village is gonna be making money, minimal anyway. But making money off of it, it, it's, it's a mixed message, it's just, it defeats, it defeats treating the opioid crisis. It just continues to add to it, it doesn't make any sense. And it's both, you know, it's just, it's a money crime. Further, further on, I'm not accusing you, you know, there, but, but in general, it, it's what it is. And frankly, I don't think that's, as far as the state goes. I don't, I don't think it's proving to be the moneymaker that it thought it was going to be when the others opted in to say, let's do this. Um, and the problems that it presents along with it, it, it just doesn't seem to be worth it. And like you said, if we had a police force here, that might be somewhat different, but the same, you still get back to what kind of example are you setting for children growing up and trying to maintain? How are you helping parents maintain somewhat of that control with their families? If down the street, they walk down Grove and Rose, if you get a slice of pizza, and then they can pick up, you know, something here at the store. It just doesn't make any sense.
And the other piece that they discussed was, all the regulations and things are not in place here. We don't have everything finalized yet.
Right.
So whoever, whatever direction communities are going in, you're kind of taking a leap here without, you know, all the information in place, because you don't know what the rest of it's gonna be. So, yeah.
So we need to schedule a public hearing, then, no, we, we're gonna, by the end of December, we have to.
We, all we need to do is make a decision of whether we want to pursue, allow it or not. And then if we decide to allow it, then you move in the direction of the local law. But to say. But to say we don't need to, we don't want to pursue this, then it's just a vote, I believe.
Beautiful.
So the town decided to do no action?
No action.
And is not, is not, is opting out or not opting in?
They're automatically opting out.
Right, they're still waiting.
Right.
I just wondered why they did it that way.
Well, they, they can, they can change their mind.
Okay. They can't change their mind.
Oh, they can't? If they take no action?
They're not, once you opt in, you cannot.
Oh, no, no. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I was thinking the other way, okay, okay, you're right.
So.
No, I'm just thinking that's odd, but anyway.
To do nothing, you're automatically in and then you can never opt out. If you opt out today and it turns out to be this big lucrative thing and you want part of it, you can opt in at a later date. I think that's my opinion on where I'm.
So do we vote?
You can make a motion.
Now and then?
Yes, we can do that, we can do that.
I would make a motion, but I don't know how to phrase it, so it's not, it's somebody else.
I'm sure you're taking it easy.
There you go.
You'll second whatever.
I don't know if I will, I'm gonna have to rephrase it because it's in and out and like, no, like, I'm very confused. I know what I think, but the language is like.
You just say you vote no, uh, just say no to drugs.
There you go.
Just say no.
I want to say no to drugs.
So Emily is making a motion to say that the village of Virginia will not allow sale of marijuana in the village.
Correct.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Is that, is that right?
No, it's.
I believe so, yes. We'll second that.
Okay. Sounds good. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed?
It's got millions of dollars over the course of my lifetime to just say no to drugs and now they're like, hey.
Yeah, let's let it in.
Just say no to some of the drugs.
All those others was.
That's Japanese.
You can smoke in your living room, it's illegal, you can smoke it in your backyard, it's illegal. You just can't buy a little bird, that is what it is.
Yes.
And you're done to buy it if you can have three mature plants and four.
Well, it's not, if you don't have a green thumb, you gotta buy those. The chances are you don't have to travel too far.
So you might, you might tomato, you know, have grown your own.
Probably have to drive your roster for an hour, so.
It's still gonna be cheaper to buy it from your drug dealer, isn't it?
Ooh, somebody was telling me that that, what is it, in California, people are still buying it legally because it's so much cheaper.
It's cheaper to buy it from, yeah, from the guy down the street in the store down the street, yeah.
But the funniest thing about all of this is I have a pretty extensive knowledge on marijuana and I'm like, people are like, oh, that marijuana, like, let me tell you this, how much you can have. Because I know nothing about drugs. Nothing whatsoever.
All right, any other items for discussion? Other than happy Thanksgiving everyone, enjoy yourselves, don't eat too much.
So will we have a public hearing then on that? Oh, okay.
It's not a law, it's not a local law.
So who, does the town have to have a public hearing then?
If they decide to make a local law, they will. But right now, they're kind of just letting it sit.
I'm very.
It's like they haven't decided yet, it sounds like.
So they have to next month decide, is that what?
I guess so.
If they do nothing, they're automatically, they should say allow. That was, they're automatically in?
Yeah.
Automatically in.
They don't. I guess no.
Just can't be, really have a public hearing.
I'm sorry? The public hearing would be if, if, well, they'll just say, once people get together and say, okay, we want these sales in the vote portion. They would have to have twenty percent of the electric on a petition to come to us and then we have to.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Churchill just had it three days ago, so.
Okay.
First.
They vote yes?
They are doing nothing as of Monday, but uh I think that was correct. Not the trustee, so I can't say.
Yeah.
Six more meetings in a row to do it, so they have plenty of time.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.